All right, now called to order the May 4th, 2017, meeting of the City of Nashville Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, I could be the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Donches.
Present.
Mike Peterson.
Present for Mayor Donches.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Ed Weber.
Here.
Alderman Sean McGinnis. Alderman Thomas Lopez. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
Dan Kelly. David Robbins. Jerry Ripucci. Sinei Mistry. Megan Gonkas.
And we have all regular members participating in voting this evening. Next up, we have the minutes from the April 13th meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 13th, 2017 Planning Board as submitted.
Motion by Minister Leclair to approve the April 13th, 2017 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any abstentions? No. Communications, good evening, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board. If you turn to your packet, I'll go through the items in that. First off, there's a reminder, the Planning Board Training Workshop this year will be on a Tuesday night, not a Thursday night. It'll be in. And that's May 23rd. We couldn't get an individual for the date we were looking at, so it will be May 23rd. If you have any questions, you would like the trainer to address or answer any topics, would you please email me and I'll forward those on to him, or any of us, any staff member? If there's a question you have, or a topic you might want that individual to discuss, we'll do so. It will be in an attorney, so, Steve Buckley. And, case number one, you have some, which is 30 Fairmount Street. You have comments from Jean Walker on a revised plan, which is also in that packet of information there. And then, case number two, which is 122 Manchester Street, we received a request from Attorney Sokol to extend that 65-day to June 1st. They will not be here tonight, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Report of the committee and liaison. Mr. Robert, anything to report?
Yes. The Historical District Commission is sending a resolution to the Alderman to have Greeley Park included in the Historic District. That is it.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll read the procedure for this evening's meeting. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the Chair, the Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the staff's stipulations. The Board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they should respond to any concerns raised by the prior public testimony. One public member will be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and do not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashville revised ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention. I ask you please turn off your cellphones at this time. All business conditional special use permits, none. All business subdivision plans. Case number one, Maryland H. Forrest Revocable Trust, owner, Kidwood Development LLC applicant. Proposed lot line adjustment and subdivision of one lot into eight lots. The property is located at 30 and L. Fairmount Street, Sheet 70, Lot 4 and 24. Zoned urban residence, and this is located in Ward 4. In this case, have been tabled from our April 13th, 2017 meeting. So, to start, can I have a motion to remove this case from the table?
So move.
Motion by Minister Leclair to remove case number one from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then, as you recall, at our April 13th meeting, we had concluded the public hearing and gone into deliberation, and then at that time determined to table it. So I would suggest, given our request to the applicant, to go back and consider our questions and to respond to those tonight, that we make a motion to reopen the public hearing for that purpose.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Minister Leclair to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name's Kevin Anderson from Meridian Land Services. I'm here to represent the client, Kidwood Development, Chriscroft Woodcastle Homes. This is a continuation, as mentioned before, of the April 13th meeting. I will presenting, I am going to be presenting this, whereas Mike Hammer presented it before. He's unable to attend this meeting, so seeing that I'm the engineer of record, it seems to be I'm the fitting person for this project. Since the previous meeting, we've met with Jean Walker to discuss the previous design, my intent with the stormwater design. Given the concerns that were voiced by this Board, and some concerns that she had, we went back to the office and redesigned the majority of this project. Rather than dwelling on the previous design, I'm just going to touch base on what we've changed on this, and look for discussion with the Board. First and foremost, we're proposing sloped granite curb along the whole frontage of North Intervale Road. On the handout I gave you, it's kind of highlighted in red along the road. This is going to collect stormwater, channel it down the road. We are proposing a catch basin in North Intervale Road to intercept this stormwater. That catch basin will then convey stormwater to a detention basin, where through an outlet control structure, it will discharge to a swale, which is going to extend past the abutting garage. I know this was a concern at the last meeting. Through that outlet control structure, we're able to mitigate the stormwater and meet existing condition runoff rates. There'll be no increase in runoff. The basin itself is sized to hold the 100-year storm event. I think that's important, as it's a requirement of the city. Other concerns worthy of noting, parking, parking was a rather large discussion at the last meeting. I will reiterate that while it is required that two parking spaces per the ordinance of the city, we have a two-car garage, we're providing space for two vehicles. You'll see these denoted as the red boxes in front of the garage area. The five middle lots, if you will, they have ample room to support two additional vehicles for a total of six parking spaces. And I will acknowledge that the house at the top of the hill and the house at the bottom of the hill, it's a little tight to fit a total of six parking spaces. What we have done through the redesign is shift these houses back in the lot to provide additional space. In particular, the one at the bottom of the lot was shifted in about five to eight feet. I will acknowledge that that's probably not enough to fit an additional pair of vehicles behind there, but we are trying to accommodate the intent of the regulation. I had a pretty lengthy discussion with Jean regarding parking regulations, and I believe I fully understand the concern of this Board. We have narrow roads in the city, people are parking in the roads, it causes an unsafe situation. And it makes sense, if you have visitors over, that you want to have parking on your own property. What I also would like to bring up at this time is, these houses that I'm showing on this plan, these are quote-unquote "the worst-case scenario." This is the largest footprint that Woodcastle Homes uses. I felt it important for both drainage calculation purposes, and to show what the largest-scale house on each of these lots would be. These houses meet all of the setback requirements, but the other houses that are offered are smaller in size. I'll leave it to the Board to discuss this later, but kind of what I'm insinuating is that additional space could be met on those lower and upper house lots. There was concern at the last meeting regarding vehicles backing out into North Intervale. To the best of my knowledge, I don't know that there's any regulation or requirement preventing such scenario. I'd also like to note that we have observed budding properties, vehicles backing out into this road, it's common practice, but this is a good time to kind of explain the site and the grading. In order for these houses to be constructed, you're constructing a flat front yard, the houses are set about 50 feet off of the lot. You'll see with the color notation on this plan, the darker green is trees to remain, the lighter green is lawn area. What this is actually creating is better sightline, sight distance, through this whole area of North Intervale Road. There is a concern previously mentioned about driving up North Intervale Road and a vehicle backing out on scenarios such as ice and snow. I think with this ample extra sight distance and visibility, that condition will probably be alleviated or greatly reduced, both by the person approaching these house lots and the person backing out. I feel that this design is adequate, and it is intended, and most likely, these vehicles will be backing out of these driveways. Again, talking about the ice and snow, there was concern about ice and snow on this hill having to stop and get traction again. I would like to say that that's a maintenance or city-type concern. What's important to note is this is a southern-facing road. Not going to say ice isn't going to happen, but by cutting back these trees and getting a lot more sun in there, we are improving any sort of icing condition. I don't know of any safety concerns historically in this area, but I can be corrected by abutters and/or city officials. To my knowledge, this is a pretty safe road. Touching base on a couple of other smaller items that weren't mentioned at the last meeting, we're proposing, you know, seven houses on North Intervale Road. Each of those houses has a sewer, a water, a gas connection, but we're going to be cutting up the road. I went over in detail with Jean about the limits of these trench excavations, and it was determined, both through Jean and I, and the applicant, that this warrants a full overlay of pavement. I just want to make sure the Board knows that, and the abutters know that, that this is, it's going to get cleaned up, it's going to be fixed right, and it's really going to turn out to be a nice subdivision. Not a requirement, but due to all of those trench cuts, it makes sense to really try to finish this off nicely. Regarding the letter from Engineering, Jean has supplied a second letter reviewing my recent application and change. There was a couple of minor comments on that. I completely neglected to add a catch basin detail, which I'll acknowledge. Minor issue, I'll add that, it's a standard detail. There was a couple of callouts about some invert, or some pipe elevations. Again, I believe that to be minor. All of those comments can be addressed, and I do believe that Jean feels comfortable with this. I'm not going to speak for her, but if there was a concern, I would hope that that would have been brought up at this point in time. Talking about waivers that were requested at the last meeting, there was obviously a sloped granite curb waiver. We're obviously going to withdraw that waiver. A waiver that I do believe still applies is the sidewalk waiver. We do have a sidewalk on Fairmount Street, it's an existing. We are not proposing a sidewalk on North Intervale, and I don't believe it is warranted, as there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road. I do believe that should be brought into the final decision. Lastly, there is a shoreline permit required for this. That is still pending at this time. Really, at this time, I'd rather have a discussion about this, the changes with the Board, rather than go into detail every little minor edit. So at this time, I'll turn it back over to the Board for questions and comments.
So, you talked through most of the points that I do think were raised last meeting. One more significant one, and I'll preface this by saying I understand that you've significantly modified the drainage plan, but there was a question about the actual, the accuracy of the calculations that had been made, and Engineer DuCrane can speak more specifically to the concern he'd raised, but I'm wondering if you'd had a chance to consider that, and whether you could address that. Steve, what, recall, we had a question about?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I remember taking a quick look at the numbers, and to me, they didn't seem correct. I didn't do anything beyond that, so.
This might be an opportunity to maybe explain my previous design. Calculations were conducted, and I do believe that they were accurate and detailed. The intent of the previous design, and it's a belief I have, is to try to treat and mitigate stormwater at the source. I was trying to promote infiltration. The basins, while there were several of them along each of the driveways, the intent was to promote infiltration. They were sized for a two-year storm event, larger vents basically running down the slope. The reason it might not have looked like the basin was sized correctly is, believe it or not, those small basins along the hillsides, they took a lot of stormwater. Those were higher infiltration rates, the soils are better up there, and it's my belief, it's a low-impact design, it's a lot of what the state pushes me to design, and that's where that came from. The previous design was adequately calculated and analyzed. It's a little different. It was a little bit out of the comfort zone for the city, and I'm not here to try to sway the Board or sway the city, you know? I'm here to make a nice subdivision, and if someone's concerned about a design, I don't have a problem switching it. This is more common within the city. I'm sure everyone feels a little bit more comfortable with this, so that's why I made that change.
Okay, so let me just let you know, Mr. Anderson, what I was talking about, I brought my previous packet here. And we didn't have the benefit of this new plan to look at prior to tonight, but I'm just looking, and here's where my question stood at the time, and it probably is the same, because you do have the same number. Your pre-construction flow for a 10-year event is .05 cubic feet per second, which to me is a very small number. So, is infiltration included in, this is pre-construction?
The pre-existing or existing conditions, that number's based on the hydrologic soil groups, basic published data that we use. This is the standard, I believe, in the practice. We use the method, the lag method, where you analyze the contours and the slopes to determine time of concentration, and that greatly affects those runoff rates. You were in a very wooded scenario, which is pretty good at retaining water and really reducing the amount of runoff. So I believe that existing condition number to be accurate.
Okay, and here's what I did the last time I was here. I just looked at the runoff from the roadway, and I just took half of the roadway, see now this crowned, and I went from Fairmount Street all the way down to the small intersection down at the bottom. I didn't include anything on Fairmount Street, even though I believe, from my own observation, water comes from Baldwin Street and from Fairmount Street around the corner, and it's a pretty good amount of water, and gets down to the bottom, bringing with it sand and debris, because you see the deposits at the bottom.
Agreed.
And I looked at, in a 10-year storm, how could that number be so small? Now, if you're saying to me that this water gets off the road and infiltrates in the ground, and that's the net result, maybe your calculations are correct, but based on my own observation, it's a rather high flow.
I'm using the best available data that I can. There is error in any sort of a drainage calculation. I think that's well-known and well-documented. It's the same practice that I've used in every community. I'm not trying to hide any sort of figures or numbers. We use the same method, pre and post. I try to break sub-spectrum areas up in similar fashion to make sure that we're analyzing the same data. All I can say is that I do stand behind my calculations. To take a step backwards on observing stormwater, it wasn't personally me that did it, the applicant actually, on several of these recent storms, sat out on the site to determine where the stormwater's going, because of the concern at the last meeting. Interestingly enough, North Intervale is a crowned road for the beginning section. It turns into a super-elevated type curve in the middle section, and then returns to crown back towards the end. I do believe that a lot of that stormwater is running down and then transferring to the opposite side of the road. That's why we don't see such a large impact on that abutting property. You look at this on its face, and I would say that that property at the bottom of the hill must be seeing a ton of water, but while I see the silts and sands that you're talking about, you don't see that ponding of water in large storm events. To back up again, I was conservative in my calculation, and I chose the crown, the center line of the road. So I took a little bit more area than the actual contour data is telling me, and that's because I don't know what's going to happen in the future. They could reshape the road, and suddenly stormwater changes. But to go back to your initial question, I do stand behind my original calculations. The number is small, I believe that's due to the hydrologic soil types, and due to the way we determine contour, the time of concentration.
I guess we have to go by, you know, what you did, and if you stand by a number, I guess we have to wait for rainstorm to prove it.
Mr. Robert?
Will the roof and the driveways, will they down the, will they be collecting the water each time the water coming down the hill? Will they be going onto the driveways and then onto the surface?
I had that particular conversation with Jean, I'll say "we," but it's really my decision. The house lots are designed sheet flow to the bottom of the hill. Water will flow over the driveway into the next abutting lot, flow across their lawn over the driveway. That's how this is designed, that's how my calculations are based, and I did bring that exact point up to her, and it's pretty typical of houses you see out there today on hillsides like this.
Okay. The manhole that's at the bottom of North Intervale, will that be big enough to handle the 100-year storm?
Yes, the answer is yes. I looked at gutter flow, and whether it was warranted to do a dual catch basin grade there. My numbers show that a single catch basin grade will work there. As far as taking the 100-year storm, it will accept it, but I think there's a lot, there's a bigger, a greater issue going on, and that's all abutting properties everywhere in the city is receiving that 100-year storm. You're going to see water bypass that catch basin, there's no doubt in my mind.
Okay.
Reality, that's what's going to happen.
The drainoff from your detention basin, is it possible to move that north on the north part of this catch basin? Last week, last meeting, the homeowner there was concerned about his garage being soaked, his property, all that water coming onto his property and damaging his property. Is it possible for you to move that north to that other section and let it go out onto this, the other, onto the back property of your property?
It can be moved further north. Contours are telling me that water's going to end up traversing that southern-abutting lot. What I don't know that was noted or called out at the last meeting is that outlet control structure, it discharges into a swale. The swale's intent is to get it past that garage, and I knew that would be of concern.
Yeah.
We can shift it further north, which might provide a little bit more space separation between that house. I don't, I think that's a realistic request, and it would probably make a change.
Yeah, I mean, there is piping and stuff like that, that can put that farther away and allow that to go away from his, from the garage, and still, it'll still go on his property, but it'll go away from this person's garage. That's an important.
I agree with you on that. This receiving area, that section of the stormwater basin, is within the state's shoreline district, which encompasses 250 feet of the river. We are allowed to do disturbance within that area. We have submitted a shoreline permit. I'm not afraid to amend one if that's what's needed. I like to keep vegetation intact, especially on riverbanks. I think that's important, so I was trying to limit the amount of disturbance in that area.
Yeah, I'm not at all.
But I agree with you, I'll shift it north, and I think.
Yeah, I'm not even asking, I'd rather have the trees and things like that, because they do hold the water much better. It's just if you shift it, if you can shift it north, and do any mitigation to keep any water runoff from, away from that person's property. Have you considered, and this is more money, this lot 7062 has a real slope to his backyard, and he has virtually no backyard. Would a wall coming off of his property with stairs down to his property, would that give him a better piece of property?
There's no doubt in my mind it would give him a better piece of property. I mean, the more flat area you have on your property, I would say would make it a better piece of property. I won't, I don't think I should answer that question, I would have my client, the applicant, answer that question in particular.
Okay, it's nothing that you have to do, I'm just offering that up.
You know, this is a construction set, a permitting set of plans, items like that, you know, you start to construct the house, and you look at it from a distance, and you go, you know, wow, we could just do a retaining wall here, and things would change quite a bit, and maybe that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind of an engineering nightmare.
Yes, it is.
And so, that's the thing, that, I'm just letting that go. As far as parking on the streets, I go by Harris Ave a lot, and that's a really steep, steep climb. I never, and I go there all the time, I've never seen anybody park on the street. I don't care how many cars they have, just don't park on that elevation. They always park in the driveways, and they have as many cars as they can get in the driveway, and nothing gets parked on them.
I believe it is posted, there's no parking on North Intervale, and I agree with you. It's up to 10%, I believe, which was noted at the last meeting in the meeting minutes, so it is a steep section of road.
I don't think there's going to be a problem, people parking there.
No.
Ever. That's all.
Mr. Leclair?
I just had a couple of comments on the utilities on the last meeting, and it looks like they, some of them still made it through. There's still overhead lines shown?
Correct, and that's an item I, you know, I actually, glad you brought that up. I completely missed it, put that in my notes. I wanted to discuss if the Board was agreeable to overhead. The poles are literally just outside of these houses, it's really a good scenario for overhead. I'm not going to push this, I'd rather have you guys discuss this, and let me know your thoughts on that. It's over. It's overhead in the street. It's an old road. Um, we prefer it to be overhead to the houses, but I'll, I'll leave that decision to the board.
So, a- are you formally requesting a waiver, then?
I am formally requesting a waiver. I did not write that down or submit it in writing.
I have, I just a clarification. Down the hill from the detention basin, like, south of it, on, on the paper map, it looks like there's like a long wall or some kind of rock structure, but I can't really tell. So when I look at the legend, I don't see that symbol on the legend. And then on the video, um, doesn't really show up as, as distinctly as it does on the paper. So could you just please tell me what that, that is along the bottom of the detention basin?
I might have messed a little bit with hatching when I was trying to get this plan to, you know, show up a little bit better. It, it's a berm in order to create the basin. Uh, it's like a two-to-three-foot-tall embankment of material, and that's for larger storm events it would get up.
So that would be like soil with plants growing in it?
Correct. Yes, definitely lots of vegetation.
Okay. And then to Mr. Weber's point about taking the drain on the, uh, right near the garage of, of, uh, number six, Beternus, I think the water is gonna flow downhill, right? So if you put the drain a little bit further north away from the bottom, then it can't, the water can't drain out. You have to keep the, uh, pipe where the water collects, which is at the bottom of the, uh, downhill portion of the detention basin.
Are you referring to the floor of the detention basin? Is that like the bottom of the basin itself?
Yes.
Uh, it's...
On, on the right side of the...
Understood.
Picture.
I don't really know the best way to explain that, that kind of bumped-out section of it. Um, there is a flat floor design to that, so I, I can move that north about fifteen feet, ten to fifteen feet. Uh, any more than that, and you are correct, it wouldn't be able to catch that lowest portion of the basin. Um, but again, I, I, I can shift it further, uh, north, and it, and it will, it will have an effect.
And according to the map, um, where that drain pipe is, there's a lot of slope there. That water is gonna go down the hill, I think more inclined to go down the hill than towards the garage.
I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the...
Yeah, there's the, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty shore landmark.
Yes.
And then not far from it is the one-hundred. So it's like a fifty-foot drop, uh, from one demarcation to the next. And I think, uh, that helps to point the water towards the river rather than the garage.
I'd like to clarify that. Those are horizontal setbacks from either the bank or the edge of wet. So your elevation grades in that area are actually pretty flat.
Oh, okay, that's the setback from the water.
That's like a setback issue, like, yeah, you're correct.
Right, I see.
It's like one-thirty-seven, I would say would be the elevation in that vicinity, and it's pretty flat in that area.
Mm.
So I, the water is, is gonna go, I guess, southeast in a, in a general fashion.
So that area would have to be carefully done so that the gar- garage is protected?
Oh, oh, definitely. And, and that swale, uh, it's not an arbitrary length. That, that is intended to be, you know, to convey that water past the garage, you know? If I were to terminate it at the back of the garage, you know, water would kind of turn it down. You really need to get it to go further. And the elevations of the outlet culvert of that structure, those were intentional elevations to make sure I had enough slope to convey the water away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so just to get a, a visual of your detention basin, it's long, it's certainly bigger than the one we saw the last time?
Yes, it is.
Right. And, uh, contour lines are kind of small to read, but it's about four feet in depth in places?
I, I would say yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I want to believe this is a much better plan than I saw the last time. And I want to believe that, uh, this development will, in the end, will be something to be proud of. Uh, looking at that last lot, and I think it was Mr. Weber who was talking about how the topography in it is, is very challenging. I couldn't imagine, and I know you said you drew the, the house footprint as the largest size as possible.
Correct.
And if you were to go with that, if you look at that, you mean, you're talking about the corner of the house being about ten feet from the bottom of that pond, four-foot-deep pond.
During large storm events, the water would be in that vicinity, yes.
Yeah, and, um, so, good luck to the person who buys that, huh? But, um, the, the homeowners are gonna be in charge of maintaining that stormwater detention area.
What we have decided, and this is after the last meeting, is that homeowner at the bottom of the hill is the sole person responsible for that basin. Um, rather than trying to cut it up into like a homeowners' association, if you will, uh, we, we feel it's better to have one individual, and it's recorded, it'll be recorded in there. And it's annual mowing. That's basically what it's limited to.
He's got a real good deal, huh?
Yeah, well, um...
Does that lot then have an easement across the other lot?
It will, yes, have an easement.
Or two lots, actually.
You're right, it is two lots.
Uh, something this big would need equipment to maintain. What kind of access is being prepared?
Uh, well, I, I might disagree with you a little bit as far as, uh, equipment. We're, we're not having to get down there with a tractor or anything like that. It's, it's mowing, it's a, a weed whacker, if you will, a trimmer. Um, I believe that's all that's necessary. Now, if it gets into a state of disrepair, that's something, trees growing in it or brush, you know? I guess I could come up with any scenario that might require something larger to get in there. Um, excellent question.
Yeah.
I would say, um, you're gonna have to find a way to get in there with a piece of equipment. You're gonna end up disturbing the, the end of that basin to get in there to do it. But that would be poor maintenance, and I, I mean, we can come up with any scenario, but you have a valid point.
Right, and, um, I, I know it's gonna be recorded and all of that. And we both know how well detention ponds are maintained. Um, if you do account at any one point in time, you'll find that better than ninety, better than seventy-five percent are left unattended, and there's vegetation growth, not just low growth, but sometimes trees and all of that. Uh, so if I'm going back to the size of this pond, and, and based on our calculations, they're saying it's gonna hold a hundred-year storm, it'll only discharge through that pipe when you have that level of storm, maybe something in between two, maybe like a fifty-year or so on, but, um, which it didn't work, work out. But your typical storm up to ten years will be contained fully. Um, I'm just worried about the number six, you know, Beternus, um, you know, if I were him, I'd be worried.
If, if there was a, a concern, uh, or a level of factor of safety, if you will, um, contours and grading is obviously working against me, and you realize that when you look at the plan. I'm kind of up against a wall with that shoreline district. I'm by no means afraid of entering into that shoreline district for additional capacity, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm designing it, I, I'm correctly designing it, and, uh, I, I'm meeting what I have to meet for regulations. I usually like to compare, uh, projects like this to state requirements, or, which are typically a little bit more stringent than local communities, and this would meet state requirements. Again, I, I feel comfortable with my design. Uh, you do bring up valid points, maintenance and capacity and its proximity to abutting properties. If you have suggestions, uh, I'd be happy to hear them.
Um, I'm just thinking how difficult it can be in the future. I mean, we, we, you know, in the city, we deal with situations like this all the time, and, uh, we get calls. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have a responsibility, and the, the owner, the property will, will be stuck with, with it. All right, uh, leaving that and going back to the parking, I think I was the one who brought up the issue with on-street parking the last time. And not, I'm asking you to put on-street parking, but simply because when the development went in across the street, they started clamoring for that it did not have enough driveway space to park their cars, especially visitor, visitors' cars. And they wanted the city to allow on-street parking. In fact, they started parking in the street because at that time, parking was not prohibited. And there was a prolonged discussion before the board of all the men about getting parking in the street. Couldn't be done because it's not wide enough. And I thought, uh, your development will be in the same situation as people start buying these homes, they'll be looking for parking for, for the visitors. And, um, and this was the opportunity to look at possibly adding some more pavement, and you also had the street to get a, a handful of cars at least, and, uh, I think you said you adequately addressed that issue, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Uh, well, I mean, you bring up a valid point, and, you know, was there a, a scenario, a number of vehicles, that type of thing, that was constantly brought up on that development across the street? I mean, I don't wanna create a headache for the future of the city. So if there, if was a scenario where they were always one car short, then that would be something we would work into this design. I, I think I've adequately addressed it, but I obviously don't wanna create a headache for the city later on.
Um, we, okay, on occasion, we'll see this come be for us. We had it, the opportunity to look at a plan the last, uh, within the last couple of months, and, um, they chose to go with a narrow street. I don't think it's a, can't remember if it's gonna be a public street, I can't remember, but they chose to go with a twenty-four-foot-wide street. And we discussed about, you can't have parking in the street and have to wait traffic. And, um, they said they would deal with it. You know, if you have additional need for additional two or three cars, you ask your neighbor, can I borrow your driveway? I don't think that's very practical. Um, with the other development that went in, it's been many years now, I don't recall a number, but I remember the old men downstairs were trying desperately to see if they can get a handful of cars, four or five, where can we fit? There, there are utility poles, can we widen and get those cars in between there? But, um, in the end, I, I, I'm not sure exactly why they did pursue that or proceed with it. They chose to prohibit parking, so...
I appreciate it. It's valuable knowledge that I obviously didn't have firsthand like you did. Um, it's, it's a concern, and again, I don't wanna make a headache for you in the future.
I, I don't think it's a headache for the city, it'd be a headache for your, your prospective homeowners. And I hope it's made clear, whereas these homes are marketed, that people, it's pointed out to them, hey, you, there are, there is no on-street parking, the likelihood of getting it is very, very slim. Um, I see a lot of homeowners who buy into something only to realize that the day they move in, there are all these restrictions. You know, and that's the worst time for a new homeowner to, to have that kind of realization before then.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Just, uh, I wanted to, just to get back to the, the maintenance of the, the basin for a second. I'm wondering, and you don't have to answer this right now, 'cause I, I think we'll have some folks in the audience who, who wish to speak, so, so they maybe could just take under consideration for the moment. Um, but I'm wondering whether you had considered and whether you would consider lots sixty-two and sixty-one sharing responsibility for the maintenance of the basin, given that, you know, a fairly significant portion of it falls onto lot sixty-one?
I, I think that's an excellent idea, equal and full responsibility. Um, so that puts two people accountable for it. Uh, I think that's, I think that's even better than having one individual.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
So this won't be a, uh, condominium association?
There's no homeowners' association involved with this, no?
Okay.
Just to, on the overhead utilities, I guess, um, some of these are, they're crossing the driveway, you know, in several, in a couple instances. So you have a utility line that's gonna be, because depending on the height of the house, you know, not very high above the driveway, you know, just the weatherhead height, so... I'm not sure I'm gonna be a fan of that, and I'm just, but, you know.
I believe when I looked at it earlier, um, I was able to route from the utility to a corner of the house without crossing the driveway. Um, definitely a valid point.
Yeah, that, there's a lot up from the bottom, there's, you know, that's crossing the driveway.
Here's a picture, you can see the wires. They're not noticeably low, they're just normal.
Yeah, but by the time they get to the house, is what I'm saying. Their lowest point is gonna be right at the, right at the edge of the driveway. It's gonna be, you know, it's a, depending on the, how many stories the house is, obviously. If it's a one-story house, they're gonna be...
Or can they go underground?
Ten feet off the driveway.
Can they be buried from the pole to the house, but not by the street?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the ordinance, actually, so... But they're asking for a waiver right now.
I'm gonna take this opportunity to withdraw that, that waiver. I mean, you're bringing up valid concerns, and, um, yeah, I mean, you just, it's not worth an argument in trying to snake something in, causing a safety concern like you're mentioning.
Yeah.
Um, we could, we could definitely, we'll, I'll formally withdraw that waiver for the, uh, underground, uh, overhead utility, sorry, and we'll route them underground. And that eliminates that.
I think it makes them lots more valuable, frankly, so, too.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
I'll sit for now? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of this Please just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mr. Jonas, and I live, live at eight, and I own number six.
And that's, sorry, that's number six, Intervale, or is it?
Number six, Beternus.
Beternus.
Beternus, thank you.
My first, the question is on the driveways at North Intervale. Uh, there's five houses on it, only one has its own driveway. There's four, the other four houses share the drive, other two driveways, which only has fir- four curb cuts. So you have four houses, two driveways. And that was put in for safety. My second concern, when I, I talked to somebody at Meridian, and they informed me that the fence and the trees along the fence would not be cut down. Now, you're gonna put this berm in there full of water, and all the trees on that fence line are leaning on, towards my property. Now, in the past, we've had thousands of dollars of damage through the years from these trees. My barn was destroyed, my brand-new truck, my car hauler, clotheslines, and in fact, one of my tenants, a limb came down, went right through his windshield into his dashboard from these trees. Now you're gonna put a berm in there full of water, it's gonna loosen up the tree roots, and all the trees that are leaning are gonna fall on my property. And I have pictures here if you wanna look at them.
Just to clarify, are, are you talking about trees that are on your property or trees that are on the abutting property?
They're on her property. They're on her property. From the fence line to the berm, it's, the start of the berm's already gonna be ten and a half feet. I've got these big, huge oak trees, they're gonna be in, sitting in water. And they said they're not gonna cut them down. So when the roots get disturbed from, loosening from the water, the trees are leaning like this now, they're gonna fall on my property. And who's gonna be responsible for that? And at the bottom of the hill, on the first, the first house, at the bottom of the hill, there's a gully in the road, on the side of the road, about four, five feet deep. So right now, when the water comes down the hill, part of that water goes in that gully. The rest of the water runs down the hill, turns, and goes in my yard. Now, you're gonna fill that gully in, you're gonna put a curbing in, now the water's gonna come down, it's not gonna be able to go in the gully, it's gonna come right around the corner into my yard. I'm gonna have twice as much water in there, and sand and silt. Now, when this berm overflows, who's gonna be responsible when it comes to my property? I mean, my barn has a cellar in it. And the cellar has the compressor, heating system, oil tank, and some very valuable auto parts. So if this thing overflows and goes in my cellar, who's responsible? The two, the two people that are in charge, that have to cut the grass, are they gonna be responsible for paying for the damage? And what's the second line of defense? I mean, I gotta, there's an old fence there that can't hold water, there should be something put up, a fence with either rock or wood that if it did overflow, it would divert it from my property. And I have pictures of the trees if you want to see them.
Sure, I'll look at them.
Yeah?
Sure, if you want to just... Should I go?
You have to walk us, and you can pass it around?
Yeah, just bring them up there. Steve, you wanna grab them?
Did you have anything else, sir?
Is that it?
Did you have any other?
Oh.
Any other comments?
No, for now, that's...
Okay. Is it okay if we keep those photos, or do you want to hang on to them?
No.
Okay. Do you want to just hand them to Roger there? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Morgan Hollis, I'm an attorney in Nashua, and I'm here representing the owner of the property, Marilyn Forrest, who's trustee of the Marilyn Forrest Trust. We're obviously in support of the application. My client took a great deal of time in selecting the builder, has worked closely with the builder in terms of what might go on in that site. She's lived there for over 30 years and has a great deal of pride in the neighborhood and concern about her neighbors. We think that the plan is a sound plan, excuse me, and that all of the issues that have been raised by the city staff have been addressed, and actually, the issues that have been raised by the neighbors. And in fact, the drainage basin at the bottom will improve the issue of drainage runoff on that street. I would just take one minute to address the questions raised by the neighbor with regard to some concern about liability. It is a personal liability issue, which is not usually addressed or answered at the planning board, but straightforward answer as a matter of law, is that property owners responsible for whatever damage they may cause. In matter of trees, the general issue of liability is that if it's a damaged tree and you don't do anything about it, you may be liable if it falls on your neighbor. If it's not a damaged tree, it may not be your responsibility. So those liability issues get resolved. The one thing I can say about this particular design is you're gonna have a home living right there, who's gonna have, a homeowner's gonna have direct responsibility for that basin, whether it's one or two homeowners. That's somewhat different than many of the drainage basins that Mr. Dukren has said are a concern. I've seen them, I've experienced them, and I've tried to deal with them. They're not owned by anybody, they're not in anybody's backyard, they're sort of in a common area, and nobody really cares too much about them. I think to the contrary, this is a situation where it's likely two homeowners will be very concerned about the detention basin maintenance. I also think they'll be concerned about the trees. So I think this development actually will be an improvement to the neighbor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask Attorney Hollis a question?
Sure.
So, talking about the, it being now a, sort of a personal or private matter regarding who's responsible. An argument can be made by the future homeowner, that this detention pond, I was seeing, a lot of water from the street. So it's not their water.
It's gonna be, you know, upfront, the homeowner's gonna see the easement, it's gonna be recorded in the deed, it's gonna describe what that basin is and who has easements to run water through it. So I don't think there'll be any question that he will think, he or she will think that it is his or her own basin to control, and then no one else shares in that. There'll be explicit in the easement who has the right, and also, it'll be explicit in the documentation as to who has the maintenance responsibilities. So I think that's, that'll sort of deflect that concern, well, why do I have to accept the road drainage? If it's designed to go in there, that's where it's gonna go.
Very good, that's good to know, thank you.
Just wondering if the applicant as well wanted to just address those concerns that were raised by Mr. Dukren.
First and foremost, I am unaware of who the abutter spoke to, and that's gonna be my priority when I get back to the office. Secondly, the trees along that basin, that whole berm area, those are all going to be removed. There are no trees to remain on that line. So maybe a misunderstanding, maybe it was misspoken, but I'm here to say that the trees will be removed along that berm, along that basin, and along that property line as shown and depicted on that plan, which, I can see if I can get back up here again.
Maybe you can just point out the, back to where the trees are gonna be removed? I know it's shown on the plan, but it might help delineate that.
Well, if you can just do it with the microphone though, that way...
Yeah, just carry it.
That way we can just, you can take it right out of there and just...
Okay.
So you can take the microphone out.
More sense, apologize.
That way we just have it for the record.
I'm gonna spin this chair around for you. The trees are to be removed for the entire length of this property line, all the way to this point. All of these trees in this area, this lighter shade of green, will be removed. Okay, I'm gonna find out who that is, and that was a misunderstanding or a misspoken word, so I greatly apologize for that. Okay, it's always been intended this way. I don't know who you spoke to, there is another individual that was doing a shoreland permit, and trees are not to be removed in the shoreland, so maybe it was a misunderstanding at that point.
Okay, sorry, it's, we can't, I understand.
I know, it's hard, because I know you guys are trying to have a conversation, but then we can't get it for the record, so.
So, I'm, I'm standing here for the record, saying those trees are to be removed. A piece of misinformation was spoken. All I can say is that the trees will be removed, those trees are not to remain.
Okay.
The second comment regarding stormwater flow, that catch basin is designed to intercept all of this road runoff and directed to the basin. It's going to greatly improve any sort of stormwater runoff scenario that's occurring today. And the last item, it has to do with large rain events. Not only is this site being inundated with a rainfall intensity of a 100-year storm event, all the abutting properties are, so this has been designed to manage and mitigate that. A lot of other properties and a lot of areas in the city are not. So I have a design that is intended to try to alleviate that 100-year. A lot of these scenarios that you see on these large storm events, those were never intended to mitigate that 100-year storm event. So I feel comfortable that this design is going to improve the current situation.
Mr. Webber?
The silt that runs down the hill and gets caught in that, can get caught in that basin, whose responsibility will it be cleaned and will it need to, will the, could the sand get into the pipe that goes to your detention basin and get clogged up?
That catch basin is within the city's right-of-way, it's the city's responsibility to maintain that catch basin. I could assume that it's going to be on a routine cleaning schedule. There are other catch basins further down North Intervale Road, it would be put on that frequency. There is a sump included in the catch basin to collect the majority of the silts and sands. But to follow up on your last comment, anything is possible, and with no maintenance in the collect, silt could go into the basin.
Thank you.
Could you just address that the abutter had a concern of combined driveways versus single driveways, and just give your professional opinion on the warrants of either one?
My, my personal opinion is that shared driveways don't work, because nobody wants to share their personal property with someone else. Your property becomes a parking ground for your abutter and vice versa. My professional opinion is, in certain scenarios, they are warranted. In this scenario, I believe these individual driveways satisfy the intent of the regulations and provide sufficient parking. One reason would be to reduce the number of curb cuts, but we're not in an area that has traffic volumes or of a capacity of a road that would warrant trying to limit curb cuts, points of entry and exit from a road. Single driveways owned by the single homeowner would be sufficient and is practical and appropriate in this circumstance.
Okay, thanks.
I wanted to just talk a little bit more about that outlet pipe from the detention pond earlier. We toyed with the idea of moving it a little bit more further north.
Yes.
And you said the reason why you can't bring it closer to the river is the wetland buffer?
No, I mean, the basin can be increased in size, I can go further, but there's no benefit to it. It, it's sufficient in size to meet all required...
Right.
...storms. And I can cut that swale further in, but you're starting to get into a flat area, and you're gonna be, you're not gonna have sufficient slope.
And that's the swale at the outlet of the pipe?
Correct, yes. It's getting it past areas of concern and then letting the stormwater flow through its natural path.
And you're pretty confident it's not gonna flood out, Mr. Jonas? Whenever it overflows?
I am confident.
Okay.
And I'd be willing to have it as a condition of approval, that I inspect this basin at the time of construction. To me, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Yeah, the biggest concern for me would be, okay, so it goes, the basin goes unmaintained for a period of time, it builds up, and then the capacity is reduced. And though I don't like that, the, having the outlet pipe operate to take that excess away, as opposed to flooding the banks, on a more regular basis, I think, you know, it becomes a sort of a fail-safe situation. So, further away from the...
To describe the outlet control a little bit better, it's a riser pipe design. Vertical orifice is at certain elevations of certain size to meter the water leaving it, and then it overtops into a horizontal, it's a pipe. So there's quite a bit of capacity to discharge through that outlet control and out through that pipe. Very unlikely it's going to go over a berm. But again, you mentioned maintenance, so...
Right, well, it's okay, wouldn't go over the berm, but it may, the pipe may activate, your outlet control may activate more often than your design is saying. And therefore, you know, you want to have that protection there all the time.
Understood.
All right, I think I get it, thank you.
Make it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I just want to give you the opportunity, if you'd like, just to respond now to what you just heard from the applicant.
Now, if this water does overflow and causes damage to my property, who's responsible? Am I gonna be held liable for it? Someone has to be.
I mean, I think, and you heard this to an extent from Attorney Hollis, I mean, I think the answer is unfortunately, it would depend. You know, if it's, if the homeowners who are responsible for the basin don't perform the proper maintenance, and that's why it overflows, then they could potentially be responsible. If it's because it's just an unusually large storm, then...
Well, isn't the developer gonna put up a bond to guarantee his work?
I mean, if you're suggesting a bond that would, that would be put up indefinitely to protect...
Right.
No, that would not be the case.
So, I'm the guy that's gonna get it on the end, if something happens?
Well, I mean, I mean, I don't know the answer to that. Well, I, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know the answer to that, and none of us do. I mean, none of us can answer affirmatively, you know, in a particular circumstance.
My problem is looking at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah. I, I'm saying, but, no, no one, no one here is going to be able to tell you that there's no circumstances under which you wouldn't, you know, suffer some financial harm because of the...
That's not right.
Well, but I mean, that, that would be, that would be the case regardless, you know. We have any further questions? The applicant at this point? Staff, if any, Dan?
The only thing I would add is that if you do decide to approve this plan, the applicant is going to be putting in the curbing, so the waiver, number one, can be deleted. And for stipulation number two, we have a new letter from Gene Walker, David May first, so you would want to use that date, and that's all.
Thank you.
Question for Linda? So, the court calls for sidewalk along the entire frontage, and in this case, it's short, it falls short. Do they need a waiver?
Well, when, when we reviewed the plan, we didn't think that, because it was just a little portion that they would have to. I mean, if it's something that the board wants to add, I mean, you certainly can, but we didn't feel that a waiver would be required when we reviewed it.
And your thing, Steve, is just because that last lot, the sidewalk ends at the driveway across the street?
Yes, yes.
Pretty close to the driveway of that house. Like extending further down on the opposite side, I'm not sure if it would be used, is the only thing I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm not sure there'd be a huge benefit to having that additional sidewalk. I mean, it is, it doesn't cover the entire frontage, but it does cover all the frontage of the first, one, two, three, four, five lots, and then at least that, that little portion of the frontage of the last lot.
I'm not, I'm not having a kid for building the sidewalk.
Yeah, you just wanted to make sure.
I think, I think there's a reason why it wasn't brought all the way to the intersection, the private development. Maybe they didn't own the land all the way to the intersection, or maybe they didn't, it was too challenging to get it in there.
Right.
One or the other. It would have been nice to have sidewalks coming from an intersection at least, because here, kids, I'm sure kids have to walk up in a, north Intervale to get to Amos Street School, via Baldwin Street, so it would have been good to have a complete sidewalk here in the section. But all I'm saying is that if, if by the ordinance, they are supposed to address sidewalks along their frontage, it's short by, I don't know, how many feet, a hundred feet, maybe, fifty feet?
Well, yeah. We would, yeah, we wouldn't want them to put it on the opposite side anyway, that would, they'd be having to cross the road even to get to it, on, on their development side. If anything, you'd want it still on the opposite side, which I'm not sure that an abutter wants it.
I'm only talking about a waiver, I'm not talking about...
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, it sounds like staff basically took the position that that a waiver wasn't required, they consider this as satisfying the requirement. I, I mean, I think I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I am too. So, Warren, did we close?
We did not.
Okay.
So do we have any other questions? If we haven't, or we can go ahead and go. This concludes the public hearing on this application, we now take our deliberations into the public meeting. The board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. So, now we're, now we're in the public meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the drainage design is improved, I mean, I like the concept a little better. I do think the detention basin is a little rough on the last two lots, but that's, that's really a real estate issue more than a planning issue at this point for a private lot, it's not a city detention basin, so.
Yeah, I know, I, I do think, and it sounds like the applicant was fine with this, but I do think it would be better to split the responsibility between those two lots, because I think it's really, it would be unfair to put that responsibility entirely on sixty-two.
But is that a planning, Roger, what do you think, is that, that's not a planning thing?
I don't think, I don't think...
It's a deed kind of thing.
Right, I don't think we need to, to mandate it as a condition, but I think the applicant suggested that they were agreeable to that in any event, so.
Yeah.
I don't, but I do think that that, because you have that responsibility to share, I, I just think it's a marginally a planning issue to the extent that I think it increases the likelihood that the maintenance will actually be performed.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. You talked about moving that outlet structure up north a little bit on the basin.
Yeah, and extending it, and trying to extend it so that it'll actually, gravity will pull it, but get it away from that gar, the garage, and he said he doesn't have any problem.
Yeah, I don't know if we said extend, I think we said moving north, right?
Moving north, and he actually said he was...
Extending it, I think is, that's starting to make some changes in the buffer, right?
Oh, and also the, the slope.
Back up if you want to talk about that.
He's, he's right at the hundred-foot butter, buffer right now with where it extends.
And he says the slope there is essentially flat.
Yeah, and, and so he can't extend it, that's right.
Yeah. But I think that gives it a little more time to, to get there.
Yeah, more vegetation.
And we got that clarification which was helpful, which is that the trees are being removed. Very important, along the, the basin there, that long line, so, that was helpful.
I don't know if there's any other secondary, I mean, is there a secondary concept, Steve, that could be used above? I mean, I guess you could always do two outlet pipes, but, you know, if you wanted a belt and suspenders or a spillway, you know, another height on it.
It becomes a permitting issue, but you can get a, probably get a pipe all the way to, you know, where, where the slope drops into the river, but that probably makes it uneconomic.
Yeah, no, I meant, you know, there's one outlet structure on here. If that one outlet structure was, it wasn't a butter concern about an overflow on here. You know, which, you know, you have an outlet structure that's going to mitigate the overflow and taking out the outlet structure, but if it is a failed outlet structure. I don't know what the elevations are on that.
No, actually...
I mean, you could, you could change those elevations on that, we could probably bring the applicant up if we want to. Change, change the elevations on that detention basin so that that south side is actually higher than the, than the east, the east side or something, so it, it wouldn't actually, if, if it were to get over, over the flow, it wouldn't actually go south.
That's right, I didn't ask Mr. Anderson about this, but a typical detention pond for a state job is designed with a spillway right at the location, like where your outlet is.
Yeah, that's the second means.
Yeah, typically.
We can ask that, we can still, we have the ability to call him up and ask him that, right?
It may reduce the capacity, I don't know.
Is there a way, Steve, to, I know the spillway, but put it into another culvert and let that fill up and then spill it out, or is that way expensive?
That comes with a dual system.
Yeah, I think you're just talking about one part of the berm is lower than the, the other parts. So that's where it overflows, that doesn't, that's not expensive, that's just, but we could clarify that if we want to. I mean, for the sake of the abutter, I'm just saying, you know, if there was an overflow, what direction would the overflow go in? We can, I, I think you could design that so it doesn't go south first, anyway, I mean...
Well, that's what I was asking him, to make sure, even on the outflow, that he produce some, do something to make it so that it, it diverts it away from that property, southern property.
You're talking about constructing in the well and buffer then? If he starts regrading down on the east side, that's, he's in the buff, well and buffer, he's going to, he's going to have to cut down trees and stuff to do that.
Right, and I think...
I don't think we want that.
Yeah, I mean, in the...
No, no, but I'm saying, I'm not saying add, make a big thing, a buffer, but just something that lets it flow more into that buffer zone.
Well, I mean, that's, I think that's the intention now, right?
Cut as well.
Right, the swale is, is, is past the garage, the idea is it wouldn't be, carry it that far, at least.
It seems to be the only remaining discussion point, I think it's worth talking to the engineer one more time, myself.
Sure.
Let's just get it clarified.
Okay, you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing one more time and talk to the engineer.
Motion by Mr. Claire to reopen the public hearing for the limited purpose of getting that clarification from the engineer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Can you, can you just talk a little bit, let's, let's, there seems to be one kind of thing left on the table, as far as I can tell, is, is a concern with the overflow of the detention basins, specifically to the south. I, I know you have an overflowed pipe that goes to the east. You know, that's the first level of protection from that. Talk about it, are there any alternative or other protections against that?
My primary concern would be, lack of a better term, an uncontrolled, it's flowing over a spillway, where does it go after it gets over that spillway? That swale on the outlet side of that culvert pipe could be enhanced to accommodate that flow. The spillway can be more towards the northern edge of the basin, and if it was to flow over that because of a clogged or plugged or poor maintenance, it would go down to that swale and then direct it away, so a belt and suspenders type approach, but you're talking low cost, and it's more than appropriate of a request.
Is your client amenable to that? Okay.
Agreeable to it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Make it?
I am.
This, again, concludes the public hearing. We will now take the deliberations back into the public meeting. The board does reserve, again, the right to recall any party for further clarification.
All right, so. Does anybody else have any other questions? I'm comfortable with that, I mean, at least we've got a little bit of a belt and suspenders there.
Right, adds just that, that little bit of additional protection. I, I mean, I do want to clarify, I mean, the, the abutter was raising, in some ways, a different issue, which is, well, let's assume, worst-case scenario, let's assume everything fails in one of the times this property. I mean, I, I think the bottom line is, there's nothing that we can do to, that would, you know, insulate him totally from any, any potential impact of that. I mean, the best we can do is require what we think is the best possible design.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
A liability is, issue is sort of beyond...
Yeah, I think, I think that the, the applicant can provide all reasonable improvements to, to kind of mitigate what they can.
Right, exactly.
And there are all kinds, I mean, the whole hill could slide down too, right, and, you know...
Well, that's right, and I mean, that...
An earthquake, I mean, you know, I mean, there's a million different things.
Too.
Right, so, I mean, you can't protect against anything, but I think having multiple methods of supporting the flow is better than more.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify, I think, I think we're, we're trying to do with, within the power that the board has, we're trying to make it.
The other thing is, is that the engineer is willing to sign off on this when he's there and it's being built, that's the thing. A lot of engineers come in, this is what I want, boom, and they leave. The builder goes in and builds it, and the engineer never sees how it's built. And this engineer is stating he's going to be there when it's being built and sign off on it.
Yeah, I mean, he's signing off on it by stamping it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter whether he's...
No, I'm saying, he even said he's going to do one more thing, they sign off, and then the, even, we've had retaining walls that they signed off on, the roads they signed off on, but the roads don't get built as per...
Yeah.
And so now, the, the rest of the neighborhood has got problems. Well, he's stating that he's going to be there and sign off on it when it's done built.
Yeah.
Which is more than what's usually happened.
And which we probably should require is a stipulation.
Just a, there's an inspection at that completion, instruction?
It's important.
That's not standard, Steve, I mean, I'm, I'm an engineer, I, I have to do that by, by license, I can't.
Right.
I don't know that, that's not...
I don't know if it's standard procedure, I've seen where certain plans have been done, provided to the developer, and the engineer goes, you call him up after, he says, "I'm gone, I'm no longer attached to this development," so. I don't think it's standard.
That's why sometimes we actually require a third-party engineer come in and inspect a road, a private road.
I'm not, I'm not a civil engineer, but, you know, my engineering career, before, I have to...
That's actually a great stipulation that he's willing to, he's stating that he'll inspect the, when it's completed.
I don't think it's a big deal to add it.
In the meantime, Mr. Chair, the fact that Mr. Jonas came up at the end and...
He's on the record.
And once again asked about who's responsible, and I'm not sure if he got the full explanation given by Attorney Hollis. Is that worth repeating so that he understands that it's, it's going to be recorded to the two... The two abutments?
Right, right, so I, I, but I think there, I think just the, I think the issue is a bit more complicated. I do think, yes, it's, it's important to reiterate that either lots sixty-two or both lots sixty-two and sixty-one would have an obligation by deed to their property to maintain the, the basin. And so that if they, if they were to fail to maintain the basin in accordance with that deed requirement, I think Attorney Hollis was suggesting is that they could potentially be, then be liable if there were, if there were an overflow from the basin because of that failure, you know, to, to do proper maintenance. But, as I mentioned, you know, they could do all the, the correct maintenance, and there could still be an overflow in, in, you know, in a certain event, and, and that's still a possibility. So I just didn't want to suggest that there's, there's, you know, that there's someone, you know, because he, Mr. Jonas made reference to like a bond. I mean, there's not, there's not a bond that's going to be in place indefinitely that's going to, you know, indemnify him from, from any damage. So I just wanted to be clear about that. So, yes, I think there are certain, there, those lots or, or the one lot, I mean, they do have an obligation to maintain the basin, and they, and that's going to be, you know, in their deed, which is going to be recorded. They're going to have that obligation forever.
It'll be in their best interest.
And it'll be in their best interest. So they could create liability for themselves if they fail to maintain, but there could be other circumstances where they've done everything they should have, and, you know, what are those on this property, so.
Who would be responsible for enforcing that agreement that they would maintain the detention pond? I mean, if something happens and Mr. Jonas says, you know, they didn't, they're not maintaining this, who does it go to?
There's no enforcement, it just potentially puts you in a better position.
But it doesn't, nobody can tell them to follow through.
It's, I mean, it's recorded with the, it's in the deed, so, you know, if someone were to say, you know, if that property owner were to say, "Hey, you know, I'm not maintaining, this is not my responsibility," and say, "Well, yes, it is." I mean, I guess the sure answer is, it, it could be enforced as a legal matter. You know, if someone were, if Mr. Jonas were, you know, to have a wateration on his property, he said, "Hey, this is your fault because you didn't maintain it." He could say, "I, you know, I'm going to try to hold you responsibly because this is in your deed." But, yeah, there's no, there's no third party that's going to enforce that, because as they said, there's not, you know, there's not a homeowner's association or something.
So, so you can't call some authority and say that they haven't cleaned it in so many years, they need to follow through? Can't do that.
Right.
What do you have, Sammy? We talked about shifting the outlet pipe, adding an additional spillway feature that drains to the east. And we talked about asking for an engineering review, website review, and final construction. Are we talking about anything else?
I think that covers everything.
Anybody else have any other comments? No? I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Claire?
I'd like to make a motion in, I think this is old business, case number one.
Correct.
And that being the owner, Marilyn H. Forrest, Reconcilable Trust, a location thirty and L Fair...
and that being the owner, Marilyn H. Forest Revocable Trust, a location thirty and L. Fairmont Street, I'd like to make the motion that this plan does meet the requirements outlined for site plan NRO section 190-138G, and there'd be one, two, three, four, five stipulations, with the first one being, what is in the staff report is number two at this point, and modified to the Gene Walker letter dated May 1st, 2017. The next, one, two, three, four stipulations be consistent with the staff report, a sixth stipulation be that the, the plan be corrected to represent the utility, the electrical utilities be underground to the new houses, a seventh stipulation that the outlet, the overflow pipe from the detention basin be shifted to the north, and then additional spillway feature be added to improve drainage, or to allow overflow to the east, and then an eighth stipulation that the engineer will review onsite the final detention basin construction for compliance with the permanent site plan.
Motion by Mr. Leclair is to approve old business case number one, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190-138G, with a total of eight stipulations, the first including the correction of the date of the letter from Gene Walker to May 1st, 2017, two through five as written in the original staff report, and six through eight as represented by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Weber. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Old Business Site Plan, case number two, that case has been further postponed to our June 2nd meeting, is that right, June 2nd?
That's correct.
Okay. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals...
That would be June 1st.
I'm sorry?
June 2nd is a Friday.
Oh, June, sorry.
June 1st would be a Thursday.
That's been postponed to our June 1st meeting. So, sorry, other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Anyone have an opportunity?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, that I've reviewed the tentative agenda with regard to proposals for regional impact and find there to be none.
Mr. Leclair makes the motion that having reviewed tentative agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact. Is there a second? Mr. Weber, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items? Mr. Weber?
This last Saturday, I went to the OEP, and so did Mr. Peterson, I found it very educational, and I brought back some of the stuff that was there, and one of the pieces that I, one of the workshops I did was on flood resilience, and how to really work with your state and to help give you some kind of a understanding of how, to do preventive maintenance and preventing stuff so that your floods mitigation you can do to help reduce that. The primary session dealt with dams and the removal of dams, and the biggest thing they said there was, don't buy a dam, don't buy, take over private dams, they're a nightmare, and they showed why it's a really, and what, what dams do, and they actually are removing dams on a constant basis, the state is trying to eliminate, there's, it's about 5,000 dams in the state, and it's hard to believe, there's that many dams in the state, and the problems associated with them, and they're now trying, they're doing, getting money to remove them one by one by one, because of the problems that, that they're, they're getting old, and they fall apart, and then when they do fall apart, and they, 10-year storm comes, you get massive flooding in areas. And this one town was, had a population of 700, and they had to spend 3 million because they were, they were in the hazardous, their dam was in the hazardous situation, and they got help from different companies in the area that needed to have that fixed, so their cost went way down because they got help. And it went through how to help, how to mitigate the problems, and how, which, ways to do it. The other two sessions were on historical, and great insight, that you can actually, when you have a government job that's in the area, that's, if it's in a historical, you can actually get money from that, they actually have to take a study of their impact on the historic district if they have a thing there, there's a certain form that you put it, fill out, and it works to help. So, maybe we can get some money for the trails that the, that the mayor is trying to do right now.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Just reminder again, I know Roger mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, but May 23rd, 7 o'clock, training session, so everybody can just add that to their calendars. All right? Mr. Weber, would you like to do the honors this evening?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we are adjourned at 8:39.